Good to do the game.
Yeah, oh, you do.
On the record.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday, the 25th of May. The time is 9:01. The Board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. Also with us is a number of guests. We'll start right here. Could you just name your name as we go around?
Diana Sanders.
We don't let them develop services, sorry.
Kathleen Grace, Auditor's Office.
Yes.
Saul Seiler, Elections Director.
Leon Samuel, Prosecutor's Office.
David Ross, Judge Prosecutor's Office.
Bruce Crisco, Operations.
Bob Perkins, Ed Caddis, Procurement.
NIT guy.
Heather Luther.
Heather.
Recording Supervisor.
And we have our distinguished assessor with us. Okay.
And everybody.
And everybody on the way, on the, on the bridge up there. We have, oh, Bob and Ryan D.
Ryan has to get it set in.
I set that up for him like months ago.
So it's always the two of you. That's funny.
Scott and we have Elizabeth and Evan and Daisy and Siobhan. Okay. All right, Matt Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. It's been brought to the Board's attention that parcel number R1319470015 qualifies for a 35% tax exemption, but inadvertently received a 30% tax exemption during the May 10 hearing. May I have a motion to correct that error?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the correction to the May 10, 2021 exemption hearing agenda to correct the percentage granted from 30% to 35% for Alchura's 1444 Entertainment LLC, parcel number R1319470015.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to make a correction for the record. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We have some unfinished business. May I have a motion to remove unfinished business from, for consideration?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Is there any discussion or questions regarding revised findings of fact and conclusions of law for application number 202?
Mr. Chair, you'll need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was there a second?
Second.
All right. Okay.
All those in favor.
All those in favor. Thank you very much. I know.
It's like a Monday morning, isn't it?
All those in favor of moving unfinished business for consideration, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any discussion or questions regarding revised findings of fact and conclusions of law for application number 202002734-A?
Well, Mr. Chair, just for the record, just want to thank Development Services team. This was a long one and a lot of collaboration went into this. And I think that at the end of the day, it's pretty much a win-win for everyone out there, the winery. So with that, I'll go ahead and move to approve the revised findings of fact and conclusions of law for application number 202002735-A. Keith Hill, John Fearino, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Is there a second to the motion?
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We got that job done.
Now we get to go have a glass of wine out there.
Wow. Yeah. Yeah, back where we're even revising it, as late as yesterday afternoon.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open, we're going to discuss resolution number 2629. I'm going to open the public hearing on resolution 2629. It is a public hearing on revising the indigent budget for Ada County. Is there anyone who'd like to provide testimony?
Mr. Chair, I'd like Siobhan, I guess Siobhan or Kathleen, yeah, to explain to the Board. It's 1.5 million, apparently coming from the indigent general fund. Well, anyway, you can explain.
Siobhan, do you want to take it and then I'll?
Sure. Kathleen, help, you're going to have to help me out a little bit though because this is super new for me. So with our budget deliberations coming into this fiscal year, we had significantly decreased our indigent medical line, thinking that Medicaid expansion was going to prove more fruitful, I guess, for us going into this year, and we undershot it just a little bit. So the request from the Board is that we're able to move 1.5 million so that we can finish paying bills through this fiscal year.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's very unusual that this happens. The last time, actually, I look back, the last time we had to do this was actually 10 years ago. And just like Siobhan said, we undershot the budget and we have to pay our bills. And so this is a way to do that. This is money within indigent, within the indigent fund. So it's their fund balance. They had at the end of last year, 5 million. We estimate even after this, they'll end up at 6 million at the end of this year. So the fund is still healthy. We're not doing any damage to the fund, but we do need to increase the budget so we can pay those bills.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Are we going to be able to, based on now historical data that we have for this year, do a better job budgeting for next year, you think?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Canyon, absolutely. I think we have a better grasp. Albeit, we have some new legislation that's on deck coming into this new fiscal year, but I think we'll be able to do a much better job anticipating what we'll need.
Thank you.
And budgeting will only be through March of next year, correct?
We'll budget for the entire fiscal year, but if no changes to the new legislation go into effect after this next session, I think that we'll, we'll have plenty.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to provide testimony? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there discussion from amongst the Board?
No, Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
I'll accept the motion.
Okay, I'll move to approve resolution 2629, as listed on the agenda.
Okay. Does anyone wish to make a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 2629. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We now have next up for discussion, resolution number 2630, adjusting the Ada County budget to reflect a receipt of unscheduled revenue to the sheriff. I will now open the public hearing on resolution number 2620. Is there anyone who'd like to provide testimony?
Apparently, the sheriff's department's not here.
Apparently, the sheriff's department's not here. I will now close the public hearing. Is there discussion from the Board?
No, Mr. Chair, I've read the resolution. I'm ready to move to approve resolution 2630, as listed on the agenda.
So that's a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Moving seconded to approve resolution number 2630. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We have another resolution, number 22631, sole source procurement. Now I'll open the public hearing on resolution 2631. Is there anyone who wants to provide testimony?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a sole source procurement for Axway Secure Transport Software. And we do have Stephen O'Meara online with us, and I think he could provide a little commentary of what exactly this software does.
Mr. O'Meara.
Mr. Chair. Commissioners, thank you, Bob. Hopefully you can hear me okay?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Axway is a software that the county has used for a number of years, and the formal name is Managed File Transfer. It's just a fancy way of secure, securely sending data files back and forth between us and other entities. Those other entities often are banks, title companies. There are many others, but those are sort of the biggest players that we use. A lot of it has to do with money and sensitive information. And Axway is the software manufacturer that we use. And we have three, three separate systems that we are needing to upgrade, and we're going to try to put them into one. The reality is, is we need their help in putting in the software that we're buying from them. So I believe the sole source talks about how we're buying the software. We're upgrading the systems that we already have, but we, we need their professional services to do it. And that is, that's what the sole source is about. The reality is, is they're, it's their software. They wrote it. Those are the folks that are really the best at installing it and setting it up for us. So, and then once it is set up, we will have some, we'll have a knowledge transfer so that my team can continue to support it going forward.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to provide testimony on this resolution? If not, I will close the public hearing on resolution number 2631. Is there any discussion from the Board?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number 2631, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
I'm moving seconded to approve resolution number 2631. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on. We have a proclamation to designate the week of May 22 to 28 as National Safe Boating Week. Commissioner Canyon, could you read the proclamation?
Sure. "The Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho, proclamation to designate the week of May 22 through the 28th, 2021, is National Safe Boating Week, whereas Idahoans increasingly took to the water for recreation and relaxation." Yes, I did. "And whereas approximately one quarter of Idaho's citizens will enjoy some form of boating this year, and whereas the number of boating accidents and fatalities demonstrates that voters should place a high priority on knowing and obeying the rules of safe boating. And whereas, a review of fatal boating accidents show that over three quarters of the victims were not wearing life jacket and could have survived if they had taken this precaution. Now therefore, the Board in recognition of National Safe Boating Week, hereby joins national local officials in proclaiming the week of May 22 through the 28th, 2021, is National Safe Boating Week in Ada County. And we encourage all citizens involved in recreational boating to put a high priority on safety by knowing and obeying the rules of safe boating and by showing courtesy and consideration on the water." Signed by the three Ada County Commissioners. So there you go. Happy Safe Boating Week. It should be a year, right? Safe boating year. Yep.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proclamation as listed on the agenda and designate the week of May 22 to 28, 2021, as National Safe Boating Week.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution or the proclamation. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we have licenses up. We have a number of licenses up on the agenda. 110 is exact of renewals, four transfers, one new license, and a catering permit, and a peddler solicitor's license. We'll take up peddler and solicitor's license. Is there discussion? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the peddler solicitor license for Michael Farnsworth of SPR Roofing and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Is there any discussion or questions on the remaining alcohol licenses?
Just that we have a lot of them.
Yeah, we have a lot. Like I said, we have.
110 renewals, yeah.
110 renewals. Anyway, all in favor to motion?
Of course, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the remaining alcohol licenses as identified on the agenda, including two catering permits, one new license, three license transfers, and 110 license renewals, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a second to the motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We need to canvas and certify the election results for the 18th Meridian and Kuna Library trustee elections. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to offer that it was a small election for us. You know, just a few statistics. We had 1,405 voters for these out of ineligible 88,000 approximately. The majority of those did come from election day voting, approximately 67, 63% from that, about 25% from absentee, and about 13% from early voting. So it was a very smooth election, very quiet. So anything, any questions from Mr. Commissioner or the Commissioners, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How many polling places did we have?
We had 41 polling places, three of which were combined polling places, total of 44 precincts for the election.
So when we have a, a small election like this that we are pretty sure is going to have low turnout, do you look towards a smaller number of polling places?
We don't generally look towards a smaller number of polling places just because of the logistics involved in moving polling places between elections. We do reduce staffing numbers though in terms of total poll workers. For example, we had four to five total staff at each polling place. This election, whereas the presidential, we had seven to eight at each polling location. So significantly more support for the larger elections.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This may be a question more for Phil, but do you have any idea what something like this would cost, taxpayers of this size?
You know, we do put a, you know, I could give a very rough estimate, but we do put an elections cost together for every elections. My very rough estimate would be approximately in the $100,000 range for something like this.
And that's paid by the state, isn't it? Subsidized by the state?
I think it is.
No, that is, that is paid by the county.
Oh, county.
No, this is, okay, so, sorry. This is a consolidated election, and we do get funding for consolidated elections, so that is true.
Okay, I wanted to make sure.
Okay, yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman. But there are associated costs that do come out of the general election fund as well.
Okay. So they don't pay all the costs.
It's expensive, yeah.
It is expensive.
Yes, it's expensive. Well, in this case, it would be, how much? About 10, $8 a vote?
Approximately closer to 100, about $80.
Oh, $8? Whoa, I guess, quickie there, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, may I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move pursuant title code 34-1410, which requires the Board of County Commissioners to canvas election returns to certify the election results as presented for the Meridian Library trustee and Kuna Library trustee election held on May 18, 2021.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any updates from, from the Clerk's office? Are you speaking to the Clerk's office today?
I am. There are no additional updates. Phil just wanted to make sure that we were all here to give testimony on our respective areas.
Okay.
In regards to licensing, we do have about 75 that are still outstanding. So you will still see renewals coming through over the next couple of blocks.
75 still?
Yes, so that means 75 businesses as of June 1st cannot serve or sell.
Ah.
That's not good. Yep.
Now, is that just because of, that they forgot, or?
We've been very actively pushing communications, both through mailing a postcard as well as emailing. And so we have not received any feedback from a good handful, so we're not sure if they're actually still open. And that's kind of the rough patch that we're in. So once we get through, probably two weeks after the expiration, we'll go through and compare state licenses that have been issued to county licenses and make those determinations that if the business just failed to renew a county license or if they closed altogether.
So today was the last day?
Really, to, to be on an open business meeting agenda prior to their license expiring, yes.
So they'll have a few days beyond June.
So technically, the way that that works with statute is the license expires at 11:50, basically 12 a.m. on June 1st. The last, they could use it as 11:59 p.m. on May 31st. Come June 1st, when it actually expires, they can no longer serve or sell, but they have a grace period of renewal for 30 days. So they can't technically serve or sell, but they can still obtain that license number. Now, if they fail to renew in those 30 days, then they basically lose that license number. And should they decide to continue their business or wanting to serve or sell, they would have to go through a whole new license process.
Okay, so they sort of keep their license, they just can't serve or sell until they get renewed?
Correct.
Okay.
And some may have gone out of business and are voluntarily not renewing?
Correct. Yeah, and we won't be able to make those determinations until about two weeks after, when we can see fully the state's records as well as ours and make those comparisons.
Okay. Any other updates?
No other updates. I think that Saul and Kathleen and Siobhan covered everything else.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll now take up the Claims Journal. All in favor to motion on the Claims Journal?
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated May 21, 2021.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Claims Journal. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, the personnel actions. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of, sorry, I move to authorize, approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the personnel actions. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The distinguished assessor, Bob McQuaid, is with us. Do you have any updates for us?
Mr. Chairman.
Assessor.
Just wanted to let you know that we've done all of the testing and we're ready to print the assessment roll. And my cell, the testing is exhaustive testing. I know one person has, I think, over 100 different tests that they perform, and we do a lot of sampling. So things look good, and like I said, we're ready to have those printed.
You're ready.
25% increase. We don't know what's going to happen.
25?
25% increase, yes.
On residential?
Yes, single-family residential, yes. Last year, we had the whole new event of the pandemic, doing, putting a whole role together without people being in the office. So that was just really nerve-wracking. Well, now we've got a 25% increase, and who knows what's going to happen? But 25% is nothing compared to what MLS has reported for the first quarter this year. 32% increase on single-family, existing single-family, 32% just the first quarter.
So if, if people are paying attention, they'll think you're getting a bargain.
Yes, oh, yes, yes, and we can remind them, hey, you know?
Sort of, yeah.
So anyway, that's, that's, assessment notice should be hitting mailboxes on Saturday.
And then the homeowner's exemption increased too, you had to deal with.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Got a lot on your plate.
Got that all done. Yeah, this was another thing that was just interesting to show. There were a lot of legislative changes that were thrown at us just at the last minute. And fortunately, we were able to, we were able to get that, get that taken care of. On the motor vehicle side, we only have three positions that are unfilled, and we have offers pending passing of background checks and the drug test. And we'll be fully staffed to attend that you had authorized earlier this year, as well as the four resignations that we have.
So with the four resignations and the three new people, you'll be fully staffed?
Yes, yes, yes.
How long is, will the Star office be closed? Is that's not a permanent closure, is it?
Mr. Chairman, no. We're looking at maybe till September. Just probably till September, make sure that we've got really good, solid processes in place and attendance and whatnot at the other locations. One thing though, we just found out that Canyon County now, they're not turning people away. That was putting a lot of pressure on us because people would leave Canyon County, hit it right over to Star or to Meridian, or even down here to our office, down here. So that's going to relieve some of the pressure for sure.
That'll relieve some pressure on them.
Yes, yes.
When does the state anticipate they will start their allowing registrations and issuing of licenses with dealers?
Mr. Chairman, last I talked to them is October 1st.
That's when they'll first start?
And that will be in place, yes.
They're going to roll that out with all new dealers, all new and used dealers, or just those that have signed up?
Mr. Chairman, all I, if, if I remember right, it was certified dealers is what I had read. So I don't know what that would include, the used or the, or the new. Something else that they're going to be starting, I believe, July, is the 502 form. That's when you get purchase of a, of a car from the dealer. That's what is really going to slow us down, is filling that out. That takes about five minutes. The, the person who purchased the car will be able to go online and fill that out. So when they come into their office, we won't have to do that.
Well, that'd be good. Now, do you know what there will, are, are they going to mail their license plate to them? Or how will that work if they're, when they get their license, their purchase from a dealer?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know the answer to that. I just know that they will not need to come and visit us if they elect to have the dealer do the title work and the licensing work.
So, okay. I've heard that the manufacturer of the license plates are way behind because of the pandemic. I've heard that. I don't know if that's true or not, but I've heard that.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Okay, any other updates for us?
It's everything from the assessor's office this morning.
Okay, well, thank you, Bob. We have a tax cancellation.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the casually lost tax cancellation, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, I will second that.
Moving seconded to authorize the casualty loss tax cancellation. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have the, our esteemed treasurer. Do you have any updates for us, Beth?
Yeah, just a brief update. So the tax notices for the payment that is due by June 21st, those notices started hitting mailboxes just last week. So that's increased our poll volume and payment volume. Again, this is for the 2020 second half. And then also, we did open a satellite location just yesterday. That's our location at Cloverdale. And, you know, that location serves our happiest taxpayers. They continue to be so grateful. We had 24 people walk in yesterday, ready to pay. They're very grateful for the convenient location and the parking. So that'll be our 23. Between now and June 21st is to, you know, accurately and efficiently bring in this revenue for all the taxing districts that we serve. That's it.
I thank, thank you for that report, and I'm glad we can make happy customers out of people paying their taxes.
Yeah. Yep.
Yes, okay. Next up, we have grants. Is there any discussion on grant application number 2107A?
Mr. Chair, I don't really know what this is. Why are we, as a county, applying for a grant to the Church of, to the LDS Church on behalf of Desert Industries? Does anybody know? Yes. Our clerk may know.
Well, actually, they're applying for, for, they have an intern or something. I can't remember exactly what it was, but it's, it's, we're not applying for a grant. They're, they're.
I believe that the, it's for the Sheriff's Office, and they get vouchers for people to maybe go in and spend it. It's up to like $1,000. So I'm not, I've just never seen them like this. Have you? It seems odd, doesn't it? Especially the way it's written up on the agenda.
No idea.
This is the, the first grant I've seen, so I was hoping somebody could explain what the, what the process is.
Can we go ahead and table this one? Yeah.
We can table it the next week. Take a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to table grant number 2107-A. Till next OBM?
June 1st.
June 1st.
Is there anyone would like to second the motion?
Well, this is grant period 4121 to 33122, so I guess there's time. So I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table the grant 2107-A to June 1st. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, but also, that's a good point that you were looking at the date. It looks like it already started. Yeah, it's fine. Kathleen says, okay, all right.
Okay.
Good to go.
Next, we need an approval on minutes. All in favor to motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes, as identified on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have interim events at Expo Idaho. Are there any? Are there any questions or discussions? We have Bob and Ryan on the phone.
And goat shows.
Oh, yeah. Bob, do you have anything you wanted to tell us before we take it up?
No, we're just, uh, you know, I, we're, we're kinda went from zero to sixty in a day when they'd opened up. So these are the results of people ready to get back in business and do their shows, so, uh, it'd be great if you could approve them.
Wouldn't we be up to eighty?
Yeah, well, we're gaining up there right now. As soon as the weather clears, we'll be at eighty.
Okay, all right, good enough. Uh, may I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the eight interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to authorize the, uh, event agreements. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have three Barber Park education event, uh, agreements for parks and waterways. Are there any questions or discussion on these items? And Scott on the phone? No, no. Oh, yeah, there you are, Scott. Do you wanna tell us anything about these, or we should just go ahead? There's a wedding, two weddings and a memorial service.
Business as usual. The memorials are always obviously a quick turnaround, so we have one coming up next week. Um, no, we're just like Bob, back in business and, uh, business as usual.
All right, are you up to sixty as well?
Yeah, we're, like, we're getting there. We're definitely getting there. I think once we get into the, uh, Boise River float season, we'll be at eighty pretty quick.
All right, well, good, what is the speed limit, you know? All right, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the three Barber Park education and event center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sock, uh, sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve the agreements for, uh, Barber Park Education Event Center. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have just agreements. Are there any questions or discussion regarding the agreements on today's agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Agreement one four two zero three, store it, self-storage, that's for operations. Is that for a year or what, what's going in there?
Uh, Commissioners, uh, and, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I could probably speak a little bit more to that, uh, cause I've been, I'm the one that's. Right, I, uh, reviewed the storage, storage agreement. So that agreement that I, is actually just for the remainder of fiscal, uh, fiscal twenty-one here. Um, and then if that's something that they would choose to renew, then we could seek renewal for fiscal twenty-two. So it is until September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
What, and what are we storing in there?
Two other issues. One, we're storing surplus supplies from the jail. We are out of room as far as storing, um, we have giant sheets of glass that are too expensive to dispose of and they're reusable. We'd like to hang on to those doors. Parts and pieces HVAC equipment, we have no more storage at Bear Steer. And we're not setting a precedent here. The Sheriff's Department has four units right next to the one unit that we're looking to rent. And in a temporary solution, until we can get, uh, Morris Hill back from the corner when they move out to their new facility. That facility will be open for storage again, and we'll be moving our, our, uh, equipment from that temporary storage area back to Morris Hill. But right now, we can't occupy Morris Hill because of the interface with the corner.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Have we thought about building our own storage sheds?
I wouldn't be building anything. We don't absolutely have to with the stratospheric costs of, uh, building materials at this time. Um, certainly is, is an idea. Uh, property is always an issue, but we don't have very much of that. Uh, so the location would be key, um, something close to the jail. And on the current jail campus, we really don't have any of, uh, spare real estate, unfortunately.
Just how much will we have in the coroner's, uh, facility once they move into the new facility?
Well, all, we'll have, uh, the open area that's currently out there. Um, and we'll also get back to the area where her investigators are located, uh, for storage as well. So it, it's sizable, it's sizable. But we can't put anything in the open space right now. In the event that the coroner has an auto accident or has to bring a vehicle in, we have to keep that space open so they could drive through that bay and get their vehicle in there for their investigations. So we can't really, it, it seems like a big space right now, but that, that has to remain open for her use until she moves out to her new facility, which has a whole, uh, satellite port that's dedicated to that very same purpose, so.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
What, what kind of storage do we have available at the Western Idaho Fair?
Um, we looked at that before, remember Bob? We were looking for temporary storage area, not, not much under, under a roof. We have a lot of open area out there, um, but as far as, we have to coordinate with Bob if there was a space. Uh, it's not, we're talking about a sizable, uh, unit. We're talking probably fifteen by forty for storage. So, uh, to put, um, a stormer shed would not serve us well out there. We would need something sizable and, uh, protected from the elements. And this is temporary. This is not a permanent solution. We're just looking for a stopgap measure until we can get Morris Hill back, which will be probably within the next eighteen to twenty months. We're hoping to break ground on that coroner's facility in August, so.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the four agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to send appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Move and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're now at procurement. Bob's with us, uh, gonna open up bid number two one zero five two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, before you this morning is an opening of bid two one zero five two, the Ada County, uh, replacement of Green Belt Pathway Sections, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. And, uh, we received one response for, uh, this project. And Evan has our Bonfire E-Procurement program, uh, queued up. Just one.
Just one.
Just one. And if you're ready for us to open, uh, we'll, we'll go ahead and proceed.
Ready.
All right, Evan, go ahead and open it up. All right, Evan's opening up our bid table right now. And, uh, what should be showing up there will be an Excel spreadsheet.
I miss the good old days.
Opening paper and.
It was like Christmas in here.
It was. Bubble wrap, oh.
Sharp instruments.
There's the, uh, bid table on the bottom there, and it's opening up. Apologize for the delay. Takes a little bit to, to work through the, uh, Bonfire system. All right, so, Evan, can you, uh, uh, consolidate the base bid and the owner's contingency? Well, we have one bid up there from, uh, Boswell Asphalt Paving Solutions. And they have a base bid of two hundred and five thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents. And an owner's contingency of twenty thousand dollars to be added into that for a total of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents. And so that is our bid. They also have an add alternate up there. Should there be enough money in the budget to proceed with that add alternate? And, uh, that add alternate is thirty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What would the add alternate be for?
I believe the add alternate is for sections of the Green Belt that will be concrete.
Concrete, that's correct. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the add alternate section currently, um, that we're considering the concrete for is a section that gets flooded every year. And what asphalt doesn't like to do is be submerged. Um, this section would be changed from asphalt to concrete to, uh, make that section of the bike path last longer without addressing, because we are in the flood, flood, uh, flood wave, we cannot change the elevations out there. We have to keep them as they are. And as a result, this flooding event happens frequently and erodes away the bike path by making it concrete. It would last, uh, a lot, lot longer, and that's pretty much the, uh, means and methods that Boise City is currently using on their green belt sections for flood areas. As a matter of fact, all their, uh, their new standard is concrete for most of their new green belt placement. But, uh, we're not going to that extent, just areas that are, be some, have the potential to be submerged.
And, Mr. Chair, uh, is this within budget?
It appears to be at this time. Uh, we have to go back and take a look.
Need to table it, but we think it is.
Yeah.
And Bob, do you know why their name isn't showing up on the document there?
This is their, their submission, uh, that they, they submit to us on, in an Excel spreadsheet. So their submission comes to us online. If Evan can go back, uh.
Yeah, I didn't open, so I opened it this way. I will see if it'll open now.
That's okay, there it is, Boswell Asphalt Paving Solutions, okay.
So.
It'd be good to have the name on the document that shows the numbers.
Absolutely.
This is a bear of bone replacement. We are not changing much out there, other than resurfacing the materials.
Where is this, this?
This is behind the Sunrock, uh, gravel pit between Chinden and the river. It's, uh, would be west of Glenwood, um, to the Boise City Sewer Treatment Plant, it's home. It's about two miles, just under two miles.
That got hit hard by Snowmageddon year, right?
Yes, uh, the people, the Sunrock folks had to go out there and use our bike path basically for flood protection dike, and they didn't do it any favors by driving heavy equipment across this.
Yeah. At one point, weren't they going to help pitch in to repair it?
Uh, I will leave that for legal and Scott to discuss that. I don't know the parameters of what all that entailed, but, uh.
Did we have discussions with? Sunrock, at one point, I thought that they were gonna help repair this section.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, you know, I, I don't really know where any of those conversations stand to date. That the flood damage that occurred, um, and the debris that was on the pathway immediately following the flood fight, uh, they did contribute quite a bit, uh, to the effort to remove all the debris that was in the HESCO barriers that were installed by the Army Corps of Engineers to prevent pit capture out there. They have also invested in, uh, a couple of core projects to remedy potential future flooding on the Green Belt Pathway. But as far as, you know, new, um, you know, pathway patching or anything like that, I don't believe we discussed that anytime recently.
So when, when do you want this table to?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, uh, the evaluation team will need some time to evaluate these, uh, the one bid received. And so we would request that this be tabled for award to the June first, uh, twenty twenty-one Open Business Meeting.
Okay, ready, Mr. Chair?
I'll take a motion.
Okay, I move to table the award of bid two one zero five two, Ada County Replacement of Green Belt Pathway Section two thousand and twenty-one to July first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Excuse me, uh, June first?
June first, two thousand and twenty-one. Why does it have Sections two thousand and twenty-one in here?
I don't know.
Anyway, I think that's an error. Sunrock section, we'll say that. Okay.
Okay, is there a, uh, second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to, uh, table this bid till June first. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, last up, we have Miss Lane. Thank you, thank you. Lastly, we have a ratification for, uh, e, uh, easement for protection of Barber Dam hydroelectric pismeters and embankment. I found out what a pismeter was. I did not know.
You can go out there and actually see it.
Yeah. Yeah, and this is, by, by the way, the, the pismeters have already been there. They've been there a long time. But, uh, Ada County never had an easement. And as part of FERC, uh, discussion with the sale of Barber, we had to get an easement. And, uh, um, our neighbors that own the property, uh, Shakespeare Festival or Shakespeare Group, whatever they are, they own that property. And we were able to successfully negotiate an easement. And that's what this is.
That was a long time coming. We had to change, property had to change hands to get this done, so, all right.
Well, the noise ordinance helped out too. Is there any, uh, uh, discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'm happy that this is finally getting done. I, um, make a motion to approve and ratify the easement for protections of Barber Dam Hydroelectric Project Pismeters and Embankment signed by the Board on May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Chair, I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
We'll be in recess. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, the May twenty-fifth. The time is, um, nine forty-eight. Uh, the Board of Commissioners sitting as the Board of Emergency Medical Services District is in session to conduct its, uh, weekly Open Business Meeting. All three Commissioners are present. Um, also with us, our IT guy, we have Sean, and we have.
Catherine Grace.
Catherine, we have Ammon, Bruce, and Mr. Perkins. Okay.
That was a test.
I guess I passed. Okay, um, Mad Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Uh, we have up the Claims Journal. I'll entertain a motion on the Claims Journal.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of the claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to, uh, authorize the claim, payment of the Claims Journal. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Well, Sean, do you have any, anything for us?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to the three of you for coming out to the barbecue last Wednesday. It was great having you guys out there. Uh, I apologize, I had to get to that JPA meeting quickly, um, after that. Uh, just an update for Access. We are working with Sean Miller. Um, we've kind of narrowed it down, so I think we're gonna, we're gonna do a day to kind of identify the issues of, uh, how we would redo things. And then it'll give us a bunch of homework, as opposed to trying to do a five-day solids, uh, design sprint. So that's really the, uh, the biggest update there. So we have a, a proposal from him that I'll probably be, uh, bringing before the Board.
Okay, and then, Mr. Chair, that will be shared, or that'll come out of your budget, or who's paying for that?
I've been talking to Stacy about how to do that. Um, I don't know that, we didn't budget for it in the Access budget, so, um, it may be something that either the city pays for this time, the city of Boise or the county. Um, I do have room in my, my budget for, um, educational stuff, so.
We can just split it too.
Yeah.
Good, well, that's exciting.
Chair?
Yeah, that was really fun. Who's the, um, the gentleman who barbecued?
The, uh, on the grill?
Yeah.
That's Jeremy Shabbin.
Okay, and then who did the brisket?
The brisket was done by our mechanic, Michael.
Michael, okay, yeah. Tell both of them, they did a great job.
I, I will.
And he did his brisket, uh, with, uh, with a, uh, a Traeger.
Yes, he did. He had a little malfunction the night before.
That's where you go. Yeah, it was a great, it was a great event. Thank you for inviting us, and we're happy to, happy to be there with you.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. All right, we'll be in recess.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good morning, today is Tuesday, May twenty-fifth, uh, the time is, uh, nine, uh, fifty. The Board of Commissioners sitting as the Board of Avamo Community Infrastructure District Number One is, uh, meeting, have a discussion in executive session. I don't want me to do that. Okay, uh, all three commissioners are present with us. Also with us are Ammon and, uh, Bruce, Bob, an IT guy, and... Um, Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, may I have a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chair, I move to go into executive session according to Code seventy-four dash two zero six, print one D, uh, regarding district expansion, and the vote to do so should be by roll call, recorded in minutes, and any documents will be kept confidential.
Is there a second to the motion? Second. Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Kenyon?
Aye.
Commissioner Davidson?
Aye.
Commissioner Beck?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and I will get you off the record.